Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Norwood City Schools' Regular Board of Education Meeting for January 16th, 2020. The Norwood City School District Board of Education follows a bimonthly meeting schedule. The first meeting of the month is called our Committee Meeting. At this meeting, we discuss fully our agenda for the Board Meeting to be held the third Thursday of each month. So last week, we had our Committee Meeting, and this week, we have our regular Board Meeting. As Board Members, we encourage you to attend, watch, and listen our Committee Discussion resulting in action at the Board Meetings. For full disclosure, our Committee Meetings and Board Meetings are always announced, video and/or audiotaped, as well as posted to our webpage for your view. All of our meetings are public, and visitors are always welcome. Ms. Camp House, please call the roll.
Ms. Ratwood.
Present.
Mrs. Cole.
Present.
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Raiber.
Present.
Mrs. Rarica.
Present.
This is Ballard just came in. Good timing. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the high and the high states of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item is Item 1.04, which is the adoption of our agenda. I'd like to ask for a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
A motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Ms. Ratwood.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes.
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Raiber.
Yes.
Next, we have Items 1.05, 1.06, 07, 08, and 09. So these are the minutes from our organizational meeting, tax budget hearing meeting, Record Commission meeting, and then our Committee Meeting that were all held last week on January 6th. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from those meetings?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Ms. Ratwood.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes.
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Raiber.
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica.
Yes.
Perfect. So now, we're going to move on to Presentations. Item 2 is Board Members. Ms. Ronan.
Thank you. January is School Board Recognition Month, so we want to show our appreciation to our great school board members. School Board Members exemplify, excuse me, local citizen control and decision-making in education. They volunteer hundreds of hours and an invisible amount of energy to ensure that our schools are providing the best possible education for the children in our community. And too often, we fail to recognize their dedication and hard work. So, the staff and children in our school district really should take a, this is really an opportunity to take the time to say, "Thanks for caring about our children's education." So, we wanted to surprise them, so in addition to the certificate, because that's all they think they're getting. Mrs. Dilly's art class would like to present a token of their appreciation. So, these young ladies, Becca Canada and Macy Blazer here tonight to pass out the beautiful vases, or should I say vases, with lovely flowers that they made in their sixth-grade art class to show their appreciation for our great Board of Education members. So again, thank you to our Board of Education for all you do for our children.
Thank you so much. This is fantastic.
Thank you to the students for their artwork. Now, I give her applause. These are awesome.
And thank you to Ms. Dilly.
Yes, and thank you to our two young ladies. You know, when I asked them to come, they said, "But we have basketball." So they're here, but they are going to be to party to go to basketball, and thank you parents for bringing them.
What are your names?
Becca and Macy.
Becca and Macy.
My Girl Scouts.
Well, that was wonderful and very unexpected, and very appreciative. Next, we're going to move on to Item 2.02, and that is to talk about our Wonderful Teacher of the Year.
Yes, today, at noon time, we got a call from the Ohio Department of Education, and they told us that our own Leila Kubish has, you know, she is currently the Ohio Teacher of the Year. Now she is a finalist for the National Teacher of the Year. Out of 55 people nominated, there's four finalists, and she is one of them. And if she receives that honor, she will get to go to the White House in the spring. So we are just so delighted, and as Leila here, we were hoping she'd be here tonight so we could inter-- Leila, come on down. We have a little something for you.
You're going to get tired of seeing us all through.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
I ran here. Actually, I will be in the White House anyway. And my students, I told them today, and they were very, very excited. And I told them that I'll be traveling a lot, and they had all given me their phone numbers, so whenever I'm traveling, I can call them, and so they can tell me what to buy them. And they want to know if I'm going anywhere exciting, so they already have a list of things, like you can buy us M&amp;M's so we can compare if it's different from here to DC. And they're absolutely amazing, and they wanted to be here, and then they planned to be here, and then I says, "I can't because I have to take a class tonight." And Tyler Lampy, seventh grader, from lunch, I found him, and says, "I can't be here tonight." And he said, "Shouldn't you be there?" And I said, "Well, sometimes I have to, I'm taking classes, I'm a student, and I, you know, need to be there meeting, and I don't want to get an F." So I think that was okay. But then I called him before I came, I says, "I will try to be there before class." So it was a tremendous honor to represent Norwood City Schools, and the community, and the state of Ohio, and all the excellent teachers in this country. I look forward to the challenges. And one other thing that one of my students want to do, as I say, you know, if you wrote a letter to the President, it's not likely that he will have it. So all of them would like to write letters to the President and let him know what they think about having guns in schools. They want it to be a safe place, so if anyone wants to write letters, I'll make sure he gets it. And I don't know if the President, you know, how he feels about reading, but I'll make sure he gets to read, and we read it for him, so to hear the message. So thank you so much. I'm very honored to be part of Norwood City School. Thank you.
So there's just one thing I just want to add to this, just to kind of, you know, put some, a little bit of perspective on this. So in 2017, according to the National Center of Educational Statistics, there were 3.2 million public educators. You're one of four.
Leila, if your professor gives you any trouble, just show him the flowers and tell him that stat. I think he'll excuse you for being like--
They have no problem failing because last year I was at a parent-teacher conference, and they dumped me on my grade.
We'll get them.
All right, so we're going to move on to Item 2.03, and that's to recognize some of our athletics.
So we have our A.D., Alex Heinz, coming up to do that. Thank you.
This evening, the NORAD Athletic Department would like to recognize two of our athletic teams and a senior athlete for their outstanding achievements on the field of play. I would like to ask Maddie Baker, the wrestling team, and the girls' soccer team to line up right here. And the wrestlers just came from practice, so hopefully they don't smell too bad. First, we would like to recognize Senior Maddie Baker. In December, she earned her third All-American Honor at the AAU Nationals. She also finished her senior year of cross-country as a first-team All-NBC member, and was named LaRosa's Athlete of the Week. And she also recently earned a $5,000 scholarship to a school of her choice from Raising Cane. So that is outstanding, and where's Maddie? The 2019 Norwood Wrestling Team achieved their goal of back-to-back Miami Valley Conference Championships. At the conference meet, they had six of the 14 league champions. They also had three district qualifiers and one state alternate. And I'd also like to mention, this year, Senior Tyler Harkins earned his 100th win as a high school athlete. So we'd like to give him and the whole wrestling team a round of applause. And the 2019 girls' soccer team earned their first conference championship in school history. They finished with an overall record of 10, 5, and 1, and a perfect 6-0 in league play. And they were only scored on twice during league play, which is outstanding. So let's give those ladies a round of applause. Thank you.
[applause]
[laughter]
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 It is students like Sarah that make Norwood City School District incredible. Norwood View Elementary School's Rising Star Students for January are Zaden Waters and Chase Burns. Chase Burns is a Norwood View Rising Star Student for the month of January. Chase is an exceptional sixth grader who leads by example. Chase is serious about his schoolwork as he applies himself with quiet determination. He's always willing to assist other students so that they can understand the material and is quick to volunteer to help his teachers. He has embraced flag duty for the school and can be counted on to properly raise and lower and fold the American flag in a respectful manner. As serious as he is about his schoolwork, you can kid around with him as he has a good sense of humor. Chase is also an active member of the After School Coding Club. You can always count on Chase to do the right thing. He helps make Norwood View a special place. We expect great things from Chase in the future. It is students like Chase that make Norwood City School District incredible. Zaden Waters is a Norwood View Rising Star Student for the month of January. He is a great role model for his classmates and gives a smile to everyone at View. He's always positive and loves to learn. Zaden's favorite subject in school is math. He works extremely hard and has a great attitude in everything he does. At home, he likes to play and draw. Zaden's classmates gravitate towards him because he's so kind and friendly. We are extremely lucky to have Zaden here at Norwood View. It is students like Zaden that make Norwood City School District incredible. Williams Avenue Elementary School's Rising Star Students for January are Adam O'Day and Harper Murphy. Adam O'Day is a first grader at Williams Avenue. Adam has the personality that lights up a room. He can make any student, he can make students and his teachers smile with his insightful and witty comments. He is a leader in the classroom, both inside and out. Adam will speak his mind, but always with a gentle demeanor. He has many friends and the kids gravitate to Adam because of his kindness. Adam's strengths in the class are both reading and mathematics. At the beginning of the year, students were asked what they wanted to work on in first grade. Adam mentioned reading and counting to 200. He has been really pushing himself in the classroom to read chapter books. He's reached his goal and is now successfully reading chapter books. Adam has also really strived to increase his addition and subtraction fluency in the classroom. Is making great strides with his goal as well. It is students like Adam that make Norwood City School District incredible. Harper Murphy is an enthusiastic second grader at Williams Avenue Elementary. She is an incredible student who makes it incredibly easy to be her teacher. Harper continuously looks for ways to improve her learning, with her favorite subject being mathematics. She focuses throughout her day on academics, but also makes a sincere effort in continuing to have a PAX leader mindset. Harper strives to incorporate her best work in all areas and never falls short to see where she might be able to assist with tasks around the classroom and the school. When she grows up, she would like to be a veterinarian and hopes to care for animals. Harper stated that her teachers at Williams are incredible because they teach her important things. They also encourage her to take risks, such as speaking and sharing in front of others, as she has a shy personality in front of groups. It is students like Harper that makes Norwood City School District incredible. We're gonna back up and do Norwood Middle School. We are waiting for a bus to arrive. Has the bus arrived, Mr. Miller?
I don't, not yet. They're on their way back from their, uh, area.
Is Jacob with us, though? Okay, so would it be all right if we waited until the bus arrived and I came back up here to report for our last two? Is that all right? Okay, so at this time, we're gonna have the board members congratulate these Rising Stars. Rising Star Students, if you would join, you and your families go into the lobby. Ms. Havlin, here in the pretty red sweater, is gonna take some more family photos. If you would all join us, and we'll take a short break to allow that to happen.
Committee report with our Education Committee Chair, Alice Raraka.
Hi. Okay, we have several things to talk about tonight. We have Ed Choice Resolution. And do I need to say, "The Birdman," or "After," or "Say it all"?
After, yeah.
I told you I'd forget.
Yeah, no, you're fine.
A Letter of Intent with the Center for Health, our Ohio High School Athletic Association membership resolution, and a field trip with Glenna Edwards and the foosball team. I'd like a motion to pass all these?
I will motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Loads and loads.
So first, I'm gonna recognize Alice, because I think she's gonna talk about the Center for Health first.
That's true, because we wanna leave more time for Ed Choice. So, um, the first thing is, uh, Mrs. Ronan had brought to us about the Interact for Health. Do you wanna tell us what it is?
Yes. It's a letter of intent. So the Norwood City School District would work with Interact for Health for a planning grant to talk about a school-based health center in the future, where we could possibly partner with a health provider who could, would send a nurse practitioner into our schools to improve attendance and the health of our children and our staff. And this would be a business partnership between healthcare provider and the Norwood City School District. Just in the planning stages, exploratory, Interact for Health would fund a planning grant to see it, so we could explore the possibilities. Thank you.
And...
Go ahead.
Yeah, one more thing?
I just wanted to say that I know that Interact with, for Health is a huge partner with Norwood. They've done a lot of really good things for us. They did the basketball courts. They helped with that, that just got redone at Shea Stadium.
I was just gonna add, I've worked in several clinics that are similarly set up in the Cincinnati School District. They function basically kind of as an outside entity, so even if you needed to come in to get this stuff done, you can come in as a family member and do that. They accept your insurance here, so it would save so much time and effort, especially with transportation needs. It's a wonderful service. They provide so many different options for your athletes, for getting their requirements met, making sure their shot records are up. And if you ever had to transfer records to a school, and you know how difficult that can be for shot records, they would be right in-house. So it would save so much effort for getting your kids ready for that first day of school. So, thank you.
So I guess now we will transfer the discussion over to the Ed Choice Resolution. So any discussion on that?
So, I will start.
Go ahead.
Thank you. There's been a lot of talk about the Ed Choice Resolution, and I feel it's really detrimental for our schools. It's gonna take a lot of money away from our schools. It's really kind of scary and alarming, and a lot of new schools have been put on it. Ours, or the middle school and the high school are on it. And I made a visual that people can use, that I will put out in the audience later. But we need to call our state representatives. Our representatives are Bridget Kelly and Cecil Thomas. They're against Ed Choice, so you would just call them and say, "Hey, good job." But the rest of them are on the Education Committee, and they all need to be called, written to, everything before February, and told that, "We don't want this." And so I have all their numbers for you, and anybody can come take a picture of it. I can email this to you, send it to you on Facebook, whatever. We can have parties where we all call together. We can write postcards together. We can meet at the mound and write postcards. Whatever you want, we'll do it.
Anybody else?
Yes, so in addition to that, I actually did speak with Bridget Kelly today. She was fantastic, got back to me within three minutes. Was very adamant about how detrimental this program is going to be. She informed me that next week, on Tuesday and Thursday, which is unheard of, they're actually having two meetings about Ed Choice specifically. They're going to be presenting SB 89, which is the Matt Huffman Bill. They were going to consider this one of the vehicle options for making changes to it, but now it's looking more like it's going to end up being an amendment rather than a full bill. It will mostly likely be a small fix, which isn't as helpful in terms of the long-term monetary impact, but it will buy us some time. The details, I believe we shared earlier, Alice shared it online as well, some of the details of what that could look like, what those changes could look like. But we are allowed to submit the resolution that we are about to do before next week as testimony. There are districts all over the state of Ohio who are similarly sized to ours, and some that are way, way bigger, who are all sending in their resolutions as evidence and testimony against Ed Choice. I hope to present this next week for a submission as testimony officially before Tuesday, so that they can read it and they can see it for both meetings. So I wanna make sure that gets up to the State House.
Are they saying that the public should come on Tuesday?
The public is allowed to come.
'Cause I might go.
I would love to go, and if I can't, she's, she's gonna tell me the meeting times.
We'll see what next week looks like.
She didn't know the meeting times tonight, before this meeting, but she said she will message me those meeting times. I'll make that public on my Facebook page as well. But we are gonna be able to submit this as testimony even if we can't go, and it will speak for us as a district that we've worked very hard to create. But for them to hold two meetings, they said they would be working on potentially an emergency injunction. That would be the type of resolution they would have to pass to make an impact, so.
We're gonna meet with her again tomorrow, so maybe she'll have more.
Yeah, maybe, hopefully.
Any other discussion?
We don't like it.
No, we hate it.
So there's one thing that I wanna say specifically about, you know, this, this resolution and Ed Choice in general, is I did get an update for some of the changes that they're looking at making before February 1st. And if you're a district that's in a high income, for household income, if you're in one of those districts, you're gonna come off that list, just because they're proposing the changes based on the building grade. Now, there are individual criteria, so let's say if you're a high school and your building grade may be good, but your graduation rate is a D or an F, you're still gonna be on the Ed Choice list. And this is where it really impacts us. And so, one of the changes that they're not proposing that's being implemented is a change that really needs to happen. And this is regarding the graduation rate definition. So in a district like ours, where we have, you know, anywhere's between 110 to 150 kids in a graduating class, and you have a number of kids that elect to defer their diploma so that they can participate in state programming for a pathway to a career. So they, so they leave our building after four years, meeting all the requirements for graduation. Now, going straight into the workforce may not be the best option for them. And so for certain students, they elect to defer their diploma so that they can participate in some additional state-funded programming. If they graduated, they're not eligible for that program. They have to defer. But if they defer, because the definition follows either a four-year or a five-year cohort, that programming is longer than, say, that fifth year. So they are not counted as official graduates, even though they meet the requirements for graduation. So we get dinged as if those kids were dropouts. And it's not right, and it's not fair.
I'd say I think Ed Choice isn't fair for anyone, not just us, but even schools that have it harder than us, because it's the state saying, "Instead of us doing what we can to help your school be better, we're just gonna say your kids can go somewhere else." Well, I'm sorry, state, these kids are yours. They are yours, they are Ohioans, they are everybody's. And it's all of our jobs to take care of them. This is really passionate for me, I'm sorry.
It's a really dangerous line, too, because then it's taking public tax dollars that you have chosen through your vote to go support your district and improve your property value, invest in your kids, and they're taking your money away from those kids to put them into private institutions that are legally allowed to discriminate. They can turn away a kid who has lesser grade point average. They can turn away a kid who isn't a star athlete. They can turn away a kid who is...
Or who needs services, special services.
Who needs special needs services.
They don't do any special needs.
Or who identifies with a different sexuality, or any type of issue that they can, they would define by their... See, I'm getting mad, too.
I know, I, it makes me teary.
They can discriminate openly, no matter what, based on their own personal criteria. And it is, it is unconstitutional.
So the proposed changes, so Ed Choice, as it was rolled out in November, December, you know, so they're gonna change that before February 1st, because there are a lot of high-value districts that wanna get off that list really bad and have, have the, have the political clout to kind of push that change forward. You know, our district's a lot smaller, we're kind of a different mindset. But the big change, the, the big change for us isn't so much the building grade as it is the graduation rate definition.
Well, that knocks us down a whole letter grade. That one percentage change...
Right.
...affected our overall arc to an entire letter grade drop.
So, so keep this in mind, keep this in mind for the high school, is that in the last state report card, we had like seven students elect to defer. And that took our graduation rate from a B to a D. But what that also did is that took our overall building grade from a C to a D. Just seven kids. Seven kids who met the requirements for graduation. Any other discussion?
Again, we don't like it.
All right, any discussion about any other topics in the Education Committee Report?
I'm good.
All right. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Havlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Raraka?
Yes.
Mrs. Raraka?
Yes.
With that, all the, all the items passes, and so I'm gonna take the opportunity to actually read the resolution that we're passing on to the state. And this is a resolution opposing the State of Ohio Ed Choice Scholarship Voucher Program. And it states, "Whereas the Ohio Legislature has recently made amendments which greatly increase the number and availability of vouchers for students to attend private slash parochial schools at public tax expense, and whereas such vouchers will be available to numerous families and students who have never attended Norwood or any other public schools and for whom state funding has never been provided to Norwood or any other public schools, and whereas Norwood state funding will be unjustly decreased by the amount of the vouchers provided to such families and students who have not and will not attend public schools, and others who transfer to private slash parochial schools, and whereas the estimated loss of revenue to the Norwood City School District over the next four years is $3.2 million, which would devastate the district's finances, and whereas private slash parochial schools, accepting students with public tax vouchers, would not be required to accept all students, but would be permitted to retain their selective admission policies without enforcement of other laws applicable to public schools, and whereas private slash parochial school students are not subject to the testing standards required of public school students, so that the actual performance of private slash parochial schools, subsidized with public tax dollars, will not be known relative to the equivalent public school evaluation standards, and whereas the current state of Ohio graduation rate calculation does not include students with disabilities, students who have deferred to exit, to complete life-skill training until the age of 22, and whereas Norwood City School District complies with the IDEA regulations to allow students to choose this path, and whereas the Norwood City School District's graduation rate was lowered by 4% in 2019, since these students counted as dropouts, while still attending school in our district, and whereas the Ohio High School graduation rate is the primary reason for the Norwood City School District being on the Ed Choice list, and whereas this board believes that the Ed Choice voucher program, as it currently exists, presents serious constitutional issues regarding the separation of church and state and the funding of religious institutions with public tax dollars, and whereas the Ed Choice voucher program will have exactly the opposite effect by providing funding to private slash parochial schools at the expense and to the detriment of public schools and their students. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Norwood City School District Board of Education that this board reaffirms its commitment to free, accessible public schools, which are adequately and equitably funded to guarantee a comparable education for all children, and therefore opposes and respectfully requests the repeal of the ill-conceived Ed Choice voucher program of the state of Ohio. Be it further resolved that this board opposes any funding program, vouchers, or otherwise that have the effect of diverting public tax dollars from public schools to private slash parochial schools. Before, be it further resolved that the treasurer is hereby authorized and directed to forward copies of this resolution to all Ohio state legislators, Superintendent of Public Instruction, and the Governor of the State of Ohio. And as a resolution.
I'd like to add one more thing. The irony of this all is out of over 3,000 districts, school buildings, in the entire state of Ohio, even if you are in a building, none of those buildings for public schools are on the Ed Choice list as an option. Only private schools, charter schools, and home schools are on that list. So you can't even choose to send your child to another public school that you think might be a better fit for you. That's the whole rub. So even on that list, you can't go to another public school.
Even though they're an open enrollment district?
Even if it's an open enrollment district. You cannot use a voucher, none of the schools, over 3,000 schools. Not a single public school is on that list.
All right, we're gonna move on to item number four, and that's personnel. Superintendent Ronan?
Yes, in 4.01, we have several resignations from the district. And in 4.02, we updated our maintenance HVAC job description. It's really to protect our $10 million investment in the new HVAC systems as we are remodeling the schools. And in 4.03, we're actually employing someone with the skills to make sure all the new heating and air conditioning equipment will run appropriately. We also have added an individual to our substitute teacher list, and we always need subs, so that's excellent. And at this time, I would like to have our A.D. come back up and talk about the number of individuals we are hiring under pupil activity contracts. Mr. Hines?
Thank you. I would like to present Drew Moppen, Football Assistant, Christian Compton, Football Assistant, Dan Luking, Boys Head Soccer Coach, Don Jackson, Boys Soccer Assistant, and also removing one name for future consideration.
Can I get a motion to approve the employment?
Call motion?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Havlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Raraka?
Yes.
Mrs. Raraka?
Yes.
Fantastic, now we're gonna move on to the Policy Committee Report. Ms. Davy Cole?
I do not believe I have a report this month.
Fantastic. More on the horizon, then. We'll move on to item number six, which is Building and Grounds Committee Report.
Thank you, Mr. President. This month, under 6.01, usage of facilities request. We do have a couple listings there. We have the Norwood Recreation for the View Gym to use games. Some of them were at the end of December, and it was kind of through January, and they, they will continue through later this month. We also have a request from Norwood Not Whole Shea Stadium for the Opening Day Parade and Ceremony, which will be held on March 28th. They'll need that facility from 9:00 to noon. And those are the only two currently under the 6.01. Would you like me to put it together with 6.02?
Yeah.
All right, and 6.02 is our Century Construction Certificate of Substantial Completion for Sharpsburg Primary. I'd like to get a motion to approve their Construction Certificate of Completion for Sharpsburg Primary. If you would like to combine those two, 6.01 and 6.02.
I'll motion to approve 6.01 and 6.02.
I'll second.
Any discussion? I'd just like to say that, you know, it's been a long tradition for the Norwood City School District to allow the use of Shea Stadium for Norwood Not Whole Opening Day, and I think that's something that's gonna continue forever in the future, so I think it's, I think it's a great event. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Havlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Raraka?
Yes.
Mrs. Raraka?
Yes.
We're gonna move on to item number seven, which is our Finance Committee Report, and I will turn that over to our Treasurer, Ms. Campus.
Thank you, Mr. President. Financials for the month ending December are attached to the agenda for your review, as well as the Sharpsburg Change Order listing and the Middle School Change Order listing. The Middle School Change Order listing is final. The final pay application for the middle school is later in the agenda for your approval. The enrollment report is also attached. December month-end financials were extremely close to estimated. For the year-to-date, we are, however, about $540,000 under expected in revenues, but I expect that gap to close soon. Our December month-end general fund cash balance was $9,869,000. On the agenda, 7.01 through 7.09 will be wrapped for your approval. 7.02 is our appropriation resolution and 412 certificate. 7.03, settlement agreement with Norwood Teachers Association. 7.04, modification to the contract with SHP, Steed, Hayman, and Paul, our architects, for just a few little changes that we've made to renovations. 7.05 is that final payout for Monarch Construction. 7.06, priority nutrition care affiliation agreement. 7.07, I'm happy to say we've had several very nice donations. $2,000 from the Committee to Elect Thomas F. Williams Mayor for Christmas for families in need. $7,000 from the Lynda Caswell Berry and Sons Foundation for the Avenues for Success Bounce Back to School. $3,365 from the Norwood Alumni Association for the Athletic Department, and $1,000 from the Wallace Group Dentistry for Norwood Athletics. 7.08, the resolution to advertise for bids to start the construction project for Norwood View Elementary. So those are all the ones that are going to be wrapped together for finance.
I wanna say thank you to all of our community members for those donations, too. That's awesome.
Yes, they're very nice. Yes, they're very nice.
Can I get a motion to approve items 7.01? Are we going all the way to 7.09?
Yes.
Okay. From 7.01 to 7.09, can I get a motion, please?
I'll motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Any discussion? So I do have a couple of things I want to say. I'm really happy to get the settlement agreement with the Norwood Teachers Association behind us for that and get everybody on the right step. The 7.04, the modification to contract with SHP, so what that is, those are the minor changes that we're going to be doing to the middle school to accommodate moving Norwood View Elementary. So that's going to be updating what we need to do in the cafeteria on that third floor and the entrance changes and to make sure that there's a, there's a pull-in space and a lane for those, for those kids. So this is all of the architectural work that's going to be done for those changes, for that. And to be honest with you, that's a whole lot cheaper than trying to do the pods again. So, so this is definitely a much more economical way to go for that. The final pay for Monarch Construction, which I believe the final pay for them is a little over $51,000, but I just want to bring this in. When we originally put this project out to bid, this project went out to bid with an estimated cost of $11 million to renovate Sharpsburg. So Monarch Construction came in with an initial price to us of just under $8 million, which was below the $11 million. And even after we made the decision to spend the extra money to remove all of the asbestos that still came in under $10 million, like right around nine and a half million. So even with the decision to remove a bunch of asbestos that we didn't have any clue that was there, we still ended up under the total estimated cost of that project of $11 million. So, you know, my hat's off to everybody involved, SHP, the administration, Monarch Construction, for making sure that this project stayed under our original estimated cost of $11 million. So what that does is that just allows us to take that money and move on to the other projects for the on down the line. So this allows us to do more later. So those are my comments with regards to that. And again, big thank you to everybody who donated money, you know, the Thomas F. Williams Committee, Linda Caswell Berry and Sons Foundation, the Norwood Alumni Association, and the Wallace Dentistry Group, a huge thank you, so, for the donations. Any other discussion?
I'm sorry, I forgot one. 7.09 is the transfer, to move cash from the general fund to the athletic fund.
Right.
It's in advance, I just forgot to mention it.
Any other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayburn?
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica?
Yes.
And then 7.10, the United Way Greater Cincinnati 2019 and 2020 Strategic Investment Agreement.
So I would actually like to go out of order here. I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda because we do have somebody in the audience that's actually going to be speaking about the United Way. And if I may, I just want to ask one question. Are you here to talk about the thing that we're going to be voting on here in a minute?
Correct.
Okay, so what I would like to do is I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to allow public comment for that before we decide on this issue. Is there a second for that?
I'll second.
Any discussion on allowing this change in the agenda?
Sounds good.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayburn?
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica?
Yes.
Okay, so now I would like to invite Leslie Stevenson up to the podium so she can, she can comment. Because this is public comment, there is something I have to read. Let me get to it. Okay, so to further improve the communication between the community and the board, time shall be allocated at each regular or special board meeting to hear the public and/or representatives of school-related organizations. Public participation at committee meetings is limited to those invited to speak on specific issues. Each person addressing the board should fill out a form listing name, address, and the agenda or non-agenda item, and hand the form to the board president. Each speaker will have five minutes to address the board. No more than 15 minutes will be allocated to any one topic unless a majority of the board votes to continue the discussion. The speakers may offer objective criticism of school operations as concerns them. However, the board will not hear personnel complaints of school personnel or complaints against any person connected with the district. Concerns and comments about individuals should be brought to the attention of the administration and handled appropriately. So with that, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I am pleased to be able to address you all. It's my first time being with this iteration of the board. My name is Leslie Stevenson. I am the manager for Success by Six, which is an initiative, an early childhood initiative at the United Way of Greater Cincinnati. If you're not familiar, the United Way of Greater Cincinnati is one of the leading United Ways in the nation, and our Success by Six initiative has been in operation for almost 20 years where we've been leading advocacy, fundraising, as well as implementation of early childhood strategies across 10 counties. Our goal has been to increase kindergarten readiness, which we've been doing and demonstrating in large part through a data partnership with Cincinnati Public Schools, and will soon, in the next couple of weeks, have some press around results of how we've been able to work towards that goal of kindergarten readiness over a long period of time. So I'm pleased to be with you today to talk about a new model for how we do our work in Hamilton County, which is the group of partnerships that I lead. And we like to work with communities to create readiness paths for families. And today, I specifically want to talk to you about My Pre-K, which is the campaign we've started, tested in counties in Northern Kentucky, and are now bringing to Hamilton County, and would like to include Norwood in that. My Pre-K is a campaign designed to connect decision-makers in a child's life to the knowledge, resources, and connections they need to make quality early learning experiences and education opportunities happen before kindergarten enrollment. If you're not aware, most brain development happens, 90%, before a child enters kindergarten, but unfortunately, about 90% of public funding, which has already been talked about tonight, doesn't address preschool. It actually starts at kindergarten once most of the brain development has started. So we use private funding to help close gaps between service providers, between districts, and between community resources. And we've been doing pretty well, but what we've noticed is being able to get that information to those decision-makers, whether they be parents or policymakers, is a space where we really thrive in convening partners. So the campaign, it's online, and it is in the public. MyPreK.com, it's a live website. Norwood, I'm pleased to say, as a community, has the most resources listed right now for Hamilton County. That's been done in partnership with Glenna Edwards, who is overseeing the creation of a directory for the district, and I was able to work with her this past July to make sure we got that information populated. And so there's resources, families can search by zip code or by county, that they can find and leverage. We're taking that campaign public, and so I want to share a couple of those resources with you. You can take a packet and pass down. We've designed some tools that not only allow for flyers to go out into communities, but tabletops to go out into communities, window clings at businesses, pop-up banners that can be placed in businesses, or even in the school buildings to remind parents, hey, you can choose your own path to kindergarten readiness, reminders specific to when it's time to register for kindergarten as well. Our strategic framework allows us to engage families and communities, actually help increase the quality of early childhood experiences. Ohio has a quality rating and improvement system, and we help support providers, particularly family childcare providers, in getting rated in the state system. And then we also help build bridges, so kindergarten transition programs. We'd like to invite, and I've submitted the materials for your review, a partnership that allows us to measure together the improvements we can make in the city of Norwood, convene partnerships that may not exist yet, as well as add funding to sustain partnerships that support that path to kindergarten readiness. Kindergarten readiness is defined by the Ohio Department of Education, not by individual districts and not by United Way. Ohio Department of Education has materials that are free that describe that, and so when we do our online, excuse me, when we do our public awareness around My Pre-K, we make that information available to families, too. What you're seeing on that product flick is a variety of resources that you can distribute in your community. Some of them have already been organized into what we call My Pre-K bags and given to the district, and those are used in family and community engagement events as well. So thank you for listening. If you have any questions about what you've already presented or anything I just passed out, please let me know.
Great.
This looks really neat.
Thank you.
So going back to our original agenda item, we do have 7.10, which is the United Way of Greater Cincinnati Strategic Investment Agreement. And so this, this is the official agreement, so, so the comments that we just heard are just kind of like the, what I would consider the sales pitch for this agreement. Can I have a motion to approve this agreement?
I'll motion.
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion?
I do have a question. I don't know if Leslie might be able to answer it. If this were to go forward, I know we've already been receiving inquiries about kindergarten and things like that, how soon would a partnership be able to get literature to residents? Would this take place next year? Would this be, you know, something we start off immediately?
Thank you for that question. Materials have already been ordered and are already coming in. We partner across the county, so we have other schools participating as well. One thing specifically that was presented ahead of time, but I didn't put in your packet today, we've already secured billboards, which will also go up. And so I will coordinate with Glenna to get the initial product package to the district, and she has a tool for how to organize volunteers and how to get that out to communities.
Thank you.
So I have a comment as well. You know, you had mentioned that funding is typically done at the kindergarten level and beyond.
Public funding.
However, the Norwood City School District does fully fund preschool. And we are, you know, a five-star, step-up-to-quality rated system, not only with traditional preschool, but also Spec Ed preschool and Montessori preschool. So how would what you're doing with United Way, would you be driving kids to our preschool?
Is that the question?
Yeah, that's the question.
Sure. So I want to clarify what I said about public funding. Preschool, this is a broad comment statewide, does not have to be provided by a district. And even when it is provided by a district, it does, the public funding for the district to operate doesn't have to cover the cost. So there are tuition-based preschool programs where families still incur the cost for the childhood 10, which is not the same in the dollar-for-dollar amount for K to 12. So that's the distinction that really does matter because there are families who cannot afford to go to preschool even when a district does offer it. But here in Norwood, it's a low cost, and so there are families who go, and it's pretty full. And five-star rated, which is the system I mentioned before, which is the highest, so kudos. There are some public schools that do not have a quality rate at preschool. To your question about driving traffic, so the campaign addresses all aspects of early childhood. So if there is a family that needs mental health services and they're looking for their zip code 45212, they can find that information in 45212 without having to necessarily be on the phone with the district to find that out. The preschool program for Norwood City Schools is already on the website, so if anybody's been looking at it, it's been there. It was submitted by Chris, I believe, or another team member a few months back. So that's already there. The campaign is across the county, and so it's not exclusive. There's information on there to really support whole families. So if they need vaccine support, if they need to learn English, there's lots of resources for Norwood, as I mentioned. So the campaign is really about the community. So I mentioned the phrase very briefly, we work with a priority community model, and we see the school district as the anchor for early childhood experiences because once you get past five, hopefully you are coming to the public school.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion about this?
I was going to say, we're really lucky to have United Way to partner with, and also we have other partners who look out for our pre-kindergarten children through our, what's it called, the Hippie Program and...
Baby Bear.
Yeah, and, yeah, the, all of that.
Norwood Ready.
Norwood Ready Kids. Yes, we're very lucky to have so many organizations who care about that.
And it's also a wonderful testament to the community that we do have here, that Norwood has so many resources that people are coming to us, that we have so many available. That's really cool. It doesn't just have to be open to us, but everybody's coming to see our city because we provide some of the best resources for children.
Thank you for coming, Leslie.
Any other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayburn?
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica?
Yes.
All right, now we'll move on to item number eight, which is the hearing of the public, or standard hearing of the public. We do have another person that wants to come up and address the board, so I'd like to invite Mr. James Bonzel, who's going to talk to us about our elementary handbook. And again, do I need to read the whole spiel again?
You do not, you do not. I will try to obey. So, yeah, school board members, just want to thank you all so much for the opportunity to address you. I want to congratulate you all on, and just thank you all on being willing to serve for these next two or four years, however long each of you all have left. So I wanted to speak today specifically regarding the elementary handbook. There's a provision in it that I kind of want to talk about and kind of just bring awareness to. But first, I want to let you know, so in 2014, a little bit after I moved to Norwood, I got, first thing I really got involved in with the city was the Safe Routes to School Committee. So it was a committee run by, I guess, Deb Robison, and she along with Mr. Gabbard, and there were a few other people there as well. And basically, we kind of came up with this Safe Routes to School Plan, the School Safety Plan, that was used as the, almost the application for grants that we, the school district got that totaled over $800,000 over a couple of years. And those were implemented over this past year, just various improvements around the middle school and the elementary schools. So with that, we, there was a survey done of parents at Williams View, or at all the schools, but specifically at Williams and Sharpsburg. They asked how children got to school, and for biking, the answer was 0% of the parents that surveyed. Was their typical method to go, for the child to go to school? At View, it was 2%. So there's a provision in the handbook that talks about biking, and I just kind of wanted to read it really quickly, and then I'll just kind of put my comments there. So it says bicycle, scooter, roller blade safety. Children are discouraged from riding bicycles, scooters, or rollerblades to and from school because of the heavy traffic in Norwood. If a child chooses to ride to school, he or she must walk the bike on and off school grounds. Students have the responsibility of locking their bikes to prevent theft. The school will not be responsible for lost or damaged bicycles, scooters, or rollerblades. And most of that's good, but I think that the very first line, there's some pretty big issues with. You know, parents are going to make the decisions themselves whether they think it's safe enough for a child to bike to school. And for the school district to, you know, discourage it, I think there's many parents that say, oh, well, you know, even if they might be willing to let their child ride a bike to school, they're, they might avoid it because it's discouraged in the handbook. And then it's also, the reason why it's discouraged is because of the heavy traffic in Norwood. Well, I will say that traffic in Norwood probably now is probably not as high as it was, and we had a lot of these factories and stuff that's all in the center of the city. And then the other thing is, if we're discouraging people from using active transportation to get to school, you're walking or biking, then of course, that's going to contribute to heavier traffic, and so it's just kind of a thing that kind of self fulfills itself. So I would just like to ask the district, the district administration and the... So I would just like to ask the district, the district administration and the school board to just look at that to see if there might be ways we could more positively write that, to still protect students, but also kind of fulfill some of the goals at least that were there when the Safe Routes to School Plan was originally written. So also, I just wanted to extend an olive branch, I guess, on behalf of the city council of the city of Norwood. I know that many of the colleagues that I work with, we want to work more closely with the school board and school district. The relationship in the past has not been a great relationship, and I won't go into reasons why, but I think that thanks to, you know, the recent addition of Mr. Miracle and just to many of the newer members on council, I think that it's going to be a big priority for us to want to do that. I do think that there's going to be opportunities in the future that will be more officially sent to your board. I've talked to Mr. Atwood about it a little bit, so definitely stay tuned there. And I just want to let you all know, too, that, you know, me, as a council member, I want to be here for you all as well. So if there's anything, whether it be finance-related or anything else that I can ever help with to provide connections, I definitely want to do that. I don't think there is anything more important in our city than the education of our young children. So I just want to again thank you all for that and encourage you, and like I said, reach out if I can ever be of assistance. Thanks.
And that brings us down to section number nine, which is the report section. So 9.01 are the board announcements. Any members have any announcements that they want to share? Yes, Amber?
I have an announcement because I don't really have a report for Oaks this month. We are going through transitioning of, after appointing new leadership and positions, I'll be transitioning from the Education Committee to the Building and Assets Committee, going on for this full-year term. We were sworn in on January 8th by District 14 Senator Terry Johnson. So I've been sworn in for the next three years as the Oaks representative and hope to bring you some wonderful information coming about what's being built, and that will pair well with what we're doing with our building and grounds reports here. So thank you.
Perfect. Any other announcements?
Yeah, I have something to share. So this past Tuesday evening, Mrs. Ronan, Mrs. Raiber, and I, we attended a dinner and presentation at the home of Mr. Tom Shepherd of Shepherd Chemical, where a program called Youth Entrepreneurs was shared with us. Mrs. Akers, our high school principal, Mr. Miller, our middle school principal, and several classroom teachers from both the middle school and high school also attended this event with us. What YE is, is it's a program that brings business to life and bridges the gap between textbook learning and practical application. I took that off their website. But it was, it was kind of compared to Shark Tank, so we kind of got a real-life, you know, example of what it was like, and it was compared to Shark Tank quite a bit. So teachers that choose to incorporate this curriculum into their classrooms, they have flexibility to choose the amount of time they want to spend on this, they can customize it to last anywhere from five weeks all the way to an entire quarter. And this isn't limited to any one type of class. I mean, this could work with social studies or with business, or they could really apply it to many different classes. As attendees of the event, we were active participants, and we did the same, the same hands-on activities in which students would engage should we bring this course here. I think all of us that attended would say that we enjoyed experiencing it the same way that our students would experience it. YE has stated as support that students that participate in this program are more likely to graduate high school, they're more likely to earn at least a bachelor's degree or higher, they're more likely to start a business when they compare those numbers to national averages. Mr. Shepherd has generously offered to fund the needed materials to bring this curriculum to Norwood, and he has also offered to send our teachers to receive the training that they would need to offer this course. So that training's going to be offered this summer in Dallas. As next step, Mrs. Ronan has requested that any teachers that would like to be trained to reach out to her. That concludes my report.
And it's fantastic. Any other board announcements? No, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
I believe that the middle school rising stars have arrived, so we would love that. Christina, please come up and read about our middle school rising stars. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Norwood Middle School's Rising Star students, our student, I think I just have one here with us now, is, we call your name, I'd like you to step forward, young man, and come stand in front, is for January's Woody Bowling and Jacob Jackson. Okay, Woody is here with us tonight. Woody Bowling is a seventh grader at Norwood Middle School. Woody knows how exciting and impressive middle school science can be with the right passion and energy, and he has just what it, that is, passion and energy. He continually expands his science knowledge and is always an active participant in class discussions. He is a jack-of-all-trades when it comes to science and has excelled since the first part of the year in life science curriculum and continues to excel currently with physical science. In addition to being such a strong student, Woody shows great respect towards other students. We look forward to what the future holds for this stellar student. He sees himself as potentially pursuing a career in engineering. It is students like Woody that make Norwood City School District incredible. Congratulations, Woody. Woody, could we get a picture up here? You just have to answer yes. So board members, would you join Woody? Thank you.
All right. That's not my seat.
Did they have the flag, Mike?
All right, any other superintendent announcements?
No.
Okay. Next is item 9.03, and that's the Norwood Community Television Board. That is my report. We just met for the first time right before this meeting, so it was the first time that the new NCT board got together, so there is some things that are going to be coming up, so I'll have an additional report probably in April. 9.04, avenues for success.
Thank you. Avenue for Success has teamed up with Kind Flash, yes, which is an organization that collects winter clothing, you know, hats, gloves, scarves, that sort of thing. They package them and then kind of leave them around town, telephone poles, park benches, that sort of things to be available for anybody who might need them. So each of our schools was a collection point this week, just for this full week, to collect any of that that students might bring in, and then whichever school brings in the most was going to win a pizza party. So that's my report.
Fantastic.
Good evening, and we appreciate you attending tonight's conference.
All right. So 9.05 is the legislative report. Alice?
Well, we've talked quite a bit about what's going on legislatively and that we might go visit some things next week in this SBA 89 and Ed Choice business.
All right. So we'll move on to item number 10, which is approval of future meetings. We do have upcoming our committee meeting, which is February 11th, 2020, at 5:30 PM at the Norwood Board of Education office. And then we have our regular board meeting, which is scheduled for February 20th, 2020, at 6:00 PM here at the Norwood High School Mini Auditorium. Can I get a motion to approve future meetings?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Ballen?
Yes.
Mrs. Raiber?
Yes.
Mrs. Raraka?
Yes.
As we have no further items on our agenda, we'll go ahead with adjournment. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Ballen?
Yes.
Mrs. Raiber?
Yes.
Mrs. Raraka?
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned.